Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you. It is a good day. We have established a quorum and asked the visitors to please retire behind the rails and ask their members to take their seats. We're going to get started. We will have our invocation. And to give that invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Dr. Leslie D. Callahan of St. Paul's Baptist Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gimm. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Creator and sustainer of all, we invoke your presence and guidance as we gather in this place, remembering our ancestors, intellectual, political, and literal. We gather this morning as citizens of this city, the cradle of liberty, which was conceived itself in the shadow and supported by the systems of slavery. We gather this morning in City Hall. We lift up our mayor, Mayor Kenny, Council President Clark, the members of the City Council, both recently seated and long-serving. We pray, oh God, that as they consider the actions this morning, that they would remember that while they gather in this place, there are other places. There are streets and schools and homes and neighborhoods. There are churches and mosques and synagogues. There are recreation centers and banks and parks. There are prisons and hospitals and nursing homes and offices. We pray that you would offer to them wisdom and insight in the conduct of business in this place that affects all these other places. We pray that you would endow them with humility and curiosity. And knowing that inevitably they will make mistakes, we pray that you would give them courage and integrity to right the wrongs that they do, as well as past wrongs. Because at the end of the day, Philadelphia is not filled with just places, but with people, young and old, black, white, Latino, Asian, Native American, married and single, women and men, gay, straight, cis, and transgender, poor and rich and middle-class, documented and undocumented. Help us all to remember in the midst of deliberation that there is more than just politics. There are real people, all made in your image, all with worth and purpose, all your people, all our people. We pray in the name of all that is holy, with memory and hope. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you all very much. Have a little quiet, please. We're going to proceed. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 18th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 18th, 2016, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly, seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 18th, 2016. Stand and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time, I will dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. This is truly the people's house, and we welcome you today. We hope that your stay here today is not only a pleasurable one, but one that you walk around, walk away with significant knowledge about what transpires in your city on a daily basis. So, again, thank you so much for being here. This time, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who presented a resolution recognizing career and technical education students and programs in Philadelphia. Would David Kaput and those accompanying him please join the Councilman Heenan at the And joining the Councilmen, we have Councilman Dom and Councilman Johnson. And Councilman Jones and Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez. And Councilwoman Blackwell.
Well, as the students are assembling behind us, I want to take a moment to thank Cheryl Logan, Chief Academic Support, and David Kaput for Deputy Chief of Career and Technology Education for being here and receiving the resolution on behalf of the Philadelphia School District to all the students that are enrolled in our City CTE program. We are also joined by the students, as you can see behind us, from Randolph Technical High School, Edison High School, South Philly High School, Soul High School of Agricultural Sciences, Kensington Business and Technology High School, and Philadelphia Promise Academy High School, joined by their council members with me here up on the dais. So, too often, we discuss and talk about education and conversation in our city when education revolve around negatives. All right? Insufficient funding and resources, poor test scores and school performances, unsafe conditions, and bad and insufficient school climate. All right? We rarely take the time to celebrate, all right? To celebrate what is working in our schools for students. With this resolution, we are doing just that, praising the career and technical education programs and students, those who are here today, and those who are gaining practical knowledge and specialized skills for them. Let's be clear that CTE is a learning for the real world. It addresses skills, and it addresses the skills gap, all right, between our workforce and the jobs that we need to fill Philadelphia and across this country. All right? So, the studies have showed, all right, graduation rates are higher, the skill sets and life skills are more competent and adjusted with life, and the higher wages, between $4,000 and $19,000 on an annual for graduates from a CTE program. So, I want to thank all the teachers, and all the students especially, who are enrolled and taking the time to join 6,000 other students in the city of Philadelphia, all right, to be in the programs here with our school district. So, I want to thank them all with that. Councilman, you want to start off here?
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Recognizing career and technical education students and programs in Philadelphia in recognition of Career and Technical Education Month in Pennsylvania. Whereas House Resolution Number 662 introduced January 28th, 2016, and adopted February 10th, 2016, by the General Assembly of Pennsylvania, designated February 2016 as Career and Technical Education Month in Pennsylvania, and?
Whereas career and technical education, CTE credentials can pave pathways to skilled trade jobs with national and hard-to-fill, with over 1 million open jobs in the trades, transportation, utilities, and manufacturing combined. Whereas the School District of the City of Philadelphia, 123 CTE programs, 29 different high schools, almost 6,000 Philadelphia School District students are currently enrolled in CTE programs, and?
Whereas in school year 2014 to 2015, over 1,800 students enrolled in these CTE programs, earned industry-certified credentials, and whereas the average daily attendance rate for CTE high schools is over 90 percent, and whereas the graduation rate in 2014 for students in CTE high schools was 90 percent. Whereas for September 26th, the Philadelphia School District received over 16,000 applications for admission to its CTE programs. Now therefore, resolved by the City Council of Philadelphia, we hereby honor and recognize February 2016 as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Philadelphia, and celebrate the month by recognizing and honoring all Philadelphia students who are enrolled in CTE programs. Resolve further that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented by the representatives of the Philadelphia School District and the students in the CTE program, further evidencing the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, as well as Councilwoman Blackwell, for their involvement with the CTE programs in their schools that were represented here today in their district. So, congratulations and thank you all.
Chair recognizes Mr. Kaput for remarks.
Councilmen and council members, Council President, on behalf of the Superintendent, Dr. William Height, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our students in career and technical education across the city. We're very proud of all of our students. As you can see, these are the students who are going to be the future leaders here in the city of Philadelphia, and as they learn in their classrooms, they realize that they are actually an economic driver for success for the city of Philadelphia. And so, it's just not learning something in high school, but they're actually going to be the leaders of this great city in the future. So, thank you very much for recognizing them.
Council be at ease. Oh, I'm sorry.
I also want to recognize the wonderful and bright teachers. Two of them are in the audience today. Well, there are several, but two, I'm just going to call out, Jessica McAtamoney, who's at Saul High School, and also Denise Majes, who's at Kensington Business and Kensington Urban High Schools. I really wanted to call them out. I've seen their great work in action, and to recognize all of the teachers who support these students in a most wonderful and authentic way. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Council will now be at ease. There you go. Thank you very much, and congratulations to those wonderful students. Before we proceed with the next presentation, I would ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other type of device that makes noise, I'd ask you please turn it off or turn it on airport mode, airplane mode. Thank you very much. This time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, I'm sorry, who presented a resolution naming of Judge Leon A. Higginbotham Jr. Way. Would Mr. Al Simkins and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and Councilwoman Cindy Bass. And Councilman Johnson.
If my girl would pay attention, I'd be all right. I had everything but to say, resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, Councilwoman. Hold on.
Resolution.
Councilwoman, hold on a second. First, can you be a little quiet as you leave? Thank you. Proceed, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Resolution, naming the unit block of 48th Street between Baltimore and King Sessing Avenue, Third District, to have, quote, "Judge A. Leon Higginbotham Jr. Way," end of quote, added to the street signs in recognition of Judge Leon Higginbotham's tremendous service and contributions to the African-American community, and of course, our whole nation throughout his life. Whereas Judge Higginbotham grew up during the Great Depression and the era of Jim Crow laws. He overcame a childhood marked by economic hardship and segregation to attend Yale Law School, where he graduated with honors, and?
Whereas he saw an education and career in law, where he fought institutionalized racism in the American judicial system. He became the first African-American district attorney in the city of Philadelphia, and in 1954, he became a founding partner of the first African-American law firm in Philadelphia, Norris, Smith, Green, Harrison, and Higginbotham. And whereas in 1962, President Kennedy appointed Higginbotham to the Federal Trade Commission, making him the youngest and first African-American to ever serve on a federal regulatory commission, and?
Whereas Judge Higginbotham played an extraordinary role in the civil rights movement as an advisor to President Johnson after the assassination of Martin Luther King, and as a member of the National Commission on Causes and Prevention of Violence. President Lyndon Johnson nominated him as a federal judge in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, where he became one of the youngest people ever appointed to a federal bench at the age of 35, and?
Whereas in 1977, President Jimmy Carter appointed him to the United States Courts of Appeal for the Third Circuit, where he remained for 16 years until his retirement in 1993. And whereas he served as a consultant to President Nelson Mandela on the formation of the Constitution of South Africa. And he continued his commitment to public service when he was appointed by President Clinton to the United States Commission on Civil Rights, and?
Whereas he was the recipient of the Presidential Medal of Freedom and numerous other honors and awards, including honorary degrees for more than 60 universities. Sadly, he passed in 1998.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names the unit block of 48th Street between Baltimore and King Sessing Avenues to have Judge A. Leon Higginbotham Jr. Way added to the street signs in recognition of Judge Higginbotham's tremendous service and contributions to the African-American community throughout his life. Further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Judge A. Leon Higginbotham as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Mr. Simkins for remarks.
Thank you very much, City Council. Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, for this wonderful honor given to A. Leon Higginbotham. This is a special day because this is his birthday. And his wife, Evelyn B. Higginbotham, wanted us to tell the City Council that she is honored, she is honored, and appreciates the efforts of the block of 48th Street in working to get this done. So, we'd like to, again, thank you.
Council be at ease. Thank you very much. And the next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home War Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160006, 160014, 160017, 160071, and 160073. And I am transmitting herewith for the introduction and consideration of your honorable body and ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44 by placing on the city plan 37th Street from Market Street to Filbert Street and from Filbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, north of Filbert Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of 37th Street from Market Street to Filbert Street and from Filbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution this morning.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct public hearings to investigate the sale of liquor in corner stores throughout Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on this week's final pastor's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce four bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 44 by placing on the city plan 37th Street from Market Street to Filbert Street and from Filbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, north of Filbert Street and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of 37th Street from Market Street to Filbert Street and from Filbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from 37th Street to 38th Street, and Warren Street from 37th Street to 38th Street. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Pine Street and 45th Street, Melville Street and Locust Street. And an ordinance authorizing Rachel Miller of Best Partners to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 4301 Baltimore Avenue.
Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Buttonwood Street, Broad Street, Calahill Street, and 15th Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration of deeds conveying conditional fees, simple totter sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 20th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final pastor's And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution, one non-privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring Paul Doris as Grand Marshal of the 246th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committee on Public Property and Public Works and Technology and Information Services to hold public hearings to review the status of the City of Philadelphia's franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania, particularly on Verizon's progress in making cable television service available across the city.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution expressing council support for an amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution that would authorize different real estate tax rates in cities and school districts of the first class for residential property, commercial property, and such other classes of property that the city may establish and conveying City Council's opposition to a provision that would mandate a reduction in other business or wage taxes as a condition of implementing different real estate tax rates for different classes of property.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I offer one privileged resolution co-signed by you and Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Wayne Jacobs Scott, Wayne Jacobs Scott P. Charles and Dr. Robert Timothy Bryan for their role as co-founders of Fighting Chance, the extraordinary new community trauma treatment training program at Temple University.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I have no bills today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill on your behalf and one bill that I'd like to be heard on after the introduction of the title.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 within the general fund relating to the Council.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code by adding a new provision authorizing the City of Philadelphia to issue municipal identification cards to city residents, establishing standards, confidentiality provisions, and other related items regarding the cards.
That chair will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I really would like to highlight the cosponsorship of this of Councilwoman Gimm and Councilman Jones. Former Councilman Kenny was a lead sponsor in this legislation, and Mayor Kenny now has embraced it. His transition report of last week highlighted the need and the best practices around public safety and really unlocking government in what we consider to be a robust municipal ID program. We're talking about leveraging our partners, our city services, our libraries, our museums, our entertainment venue, and that's what we foresee as we work through with the Kenny administration and implementation of Philadelphia pride and putting together a robust municipal ID program. I think that the mayor has been steadfast in his commitment for us to unlock this, the challenges that our returning citizens and undocumented communities face in the City of Philadelphia. So I want to thank the mayor for embracing this. I look forward to working with his administration on the implementation of it, even as far away as Mayor de Blasio in New York has recognized that Philadelphia will become leading the charge around municipal IDs and a very good, fulfilling, best practices municipal ID program in the City of Philadelphia. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions. One of those privileged resolutions is co-sponsored by Councilman Tauntonberger, and I'd like to speak on the resolution along with Councilman Tauntonberger.
Okay. At the time of the passage...
That's fine.
Yeah. Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the outstanding contributions and achievements of Julianne Bell, an accomplished architect and Philadelphia resident.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution in recognition of National Developmental Disability Awareness Month, honoring the Philadelphia Intellectual Disability Services on the occasion of the 24th Annual My City, My Place, Brighter Futures Awards.
Thank you. That will also be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions today, one of which is co-sponsored by Councilwoman Parker. I'd like to speak about it afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and acknowledging Jason Pennardo and his company Primary Pictures for the creation of Pop-Up Philly, a pop-up restaurant organized for the purpose of providing approximately 200 members of Philadelphia's homeless community with a fine dining experience, a selection of donated goods and clothing, and access to representatives from a variety of local shelters and organizations to help them take the first steps towards getting back on their feet.
Thank you. That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and acknowledging the Philly First Campaign, the Advocacy Institute, and Real Talk Tobacco's youth-led media campaign for their efforts and initiative which calls for the whole of Philadelphia to work towards becoming the first city with a 0% youth smoking rate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Speak at the time of the passage. Thank you. That will be on this week's final passes calendar. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tauntonberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills nor resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions. One, co-sponsored by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to investigate and hold hearings on the preservation and expansion of the city's public art, including its voluminous collection of outdoor murals, mosaics, and sculptures.
Thank you. That resolution will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple totter sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 11th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. That concludes, I'm sorry, Chair recognizes Councilman O. Didn't want to leave you out, sir. Sorry.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one resolution co-sponsored by Councilwoman Cindy Bass, Curtis Jones Jr., Derek Green, and Blondell Reynolds Brown, and one bill. It may be heard on bill after it is, the title is read.
Now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code and title of Contracts of procurement by adding a new category of disadvantaged business enterprises and of city contracts entitled lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender persons that must be considered separately by the Finance Director in conducting the annual disparity study and devising the annual participation goals as required by Section 6109 of the Philadelphia Home War Charter, and also adding a rebuttable presumption that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender persons are socially and economically disadvantaged individuals.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. That actually has a quite lengthy title because it's, there's actually more in the back, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to add that the reason that I introduced the bill is because we're about to go into budget hearings, and there's always talks about minority participation goals, things like that. And it concerned me that we basically do not have a system within our city, whether it be the city or a third party, that is actually responsible to the city for the certification of minority or disadvantaged women-owned or persons with disabilities and any type of these businesses. And so I wanted to write a resolution for a hearing. But when I looked at the bill, I saw that the definition of those who are subject to prejudice or differential treatment, which results in impaired ability to compete because of diminished capital or credit opportunities, were Asian-American, African-American, Hispanic, female, and persons with disabilities. What I felt was missing was it did not include LGBT, as this body has done a lot of work in that area, and led by other persons, not me, it was led by others, but that is now the state of the law in Philadelphia. Secondly, we have done also a lot of work, once again, others leading the way, notably Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., for religious minorities, and they're not included either. So I've introduced the bill to, I believe, try to upgrade the definition of minorities as relates to contracting goals with the city. There's required a disparity study on an annual basis, and if the categories are not included, those groups do not get looked at in terms of whether or not there is disparity and whether or not goals should be created. So that's the reason I did it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold public hearings to determine whether the City of Philadelphia should provide its own certification process for minority women or disabled-owned enterprises.
Thank you. And that will be on today's final passes calendar. There are no reports from committee today. We will have the consideration of the calendar. Chief Clerk, will please read the bills on the first reading calendar.
Bill Number 160007, entitled, An Ordinance, repealing an ordinance, Bill Number 150894, entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Striking from City Plan Number 119 and Abandoning of a Certain Pedestrian Walkway Reserved Within the Bed of Former Thompson Street, from Watch Street to 13th Street, and the Modifying of a Certain Right-of-Way for Drainage Purposes, Water Main Purposes, and Gas Main Purposes, and Public Utility Purposes Also Reserved Within the Bed of Said Former Thompson Street.
Chair agrees. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passes calendars today. Number, bill numbers 160140, 160008, 160011, 160014, 160017, 160071, 160092, 160093, and 160009. All of the resolutions and bills will be, are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills or resolutions on the final passes calendar, we'll have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask if you sign at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium along with a microphone. When that light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 160140.
Again, we're giving stuff to the Redevelopment Authority. At this time, I am without my home at 1038 West Wyoming due to egregious actions and inactions of this legislative body. How many decades does it take for a speedy trial? In my case, it's almost two. In 1991, I purchased a home, as referred to later in an article as even the federal government is suffering buyers. Then came 18 years of waiting for this city to act while the city received federal funds. I've read several articles and communications from US HUD, HUD, Housing and Urban Development, that have alluded to the city receiving up to $40 million or more extra dollars per year for over a decade. The newspaper reports only $32 million was spent on Logan. Guess that's where the extra funds in the 1015 article that quotes Abernathy from the RDA, the upwards of $100 million taxpayer dollars, may be given to a developer to build a mall on my home that was taken from me without payment to me for my fully remodeled three-apartment, two-storefront building that was sold to me as a shell by HUD for $6,000. I was offered the ridiculously outrageous amounts from a city agency under council's control of $100. Then they offered me $800. Then they just changed the title without informing me. I was required to pay the mortgage, taxes, and war bills for over 18 years. I received nothing. Federal officials told me I gave the same plenty of funds to solve this matter. If we, the people, have to solve this problem ourselves, why did we hire all you? The agents and agencies solely designed to serve the people and conduct our business. You, the agents and agencies, are bound by oath to support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws. Like in Flint, Michigan, this government stalls while the people suffer. Paul Robes says, quoted, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic made, but to end the injustice," which is look into the RDA. These articles and previous submissions require immediate defunding and investigation of the Redevelopment Authority before more laws, as in the above and previously mentioned, are violated by you, the agents and agencies of this government. And duly notified since December 3, 2015, you are in this member of the people's opinion accessories after the fact. Now, let's solve this problem.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Commenting on Councilman Dom's Pop-Up Philly Resolution.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to start by thanking both Councilman Dom and Councilwoman Parker. For those of you who don't know, Pop-Up Philly started four weeks ago as an idea on Facebook to have, to host a pop-up restaurant for 150 homeless citizens in the City of Philadelphia. It would be an opportunity for citizens to give back, and give back they did. The goal was to raise $20,000 in 20 days. We raised $20,000 in 96 hours. With the help of businesses in the city such as Pat's Steaks, Gino's Steaks, Cheska Fe, Tolu's, Termini Brothers Pastries, we are going to have an event this Sunday at the Armory. We're going to feed 200 homeless people. We partnered with St. John's Hospice, with Project Home, with the Veterans Administration's homeless shelter in University City. We will be giving out over 100 new coats, 250 backpacks with filled with toiletry bags. They will get Visa gift cards in the amount of $20. And it's not, it's not about the meal, it's about the experience. We're trying to give our guests a sense of hope. I know this event isn't going to solve the, isn't going to solve the homelessness that the guests are dealing with, but I want them to walk away and know that when they make their next decision about their life, that somebody cares. And we hope that that sense of hope affects that decision and allows them to make the first step to getting back on their feet. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Commenting on Councilman Dom's Philly First Campaign Resolution.
Good morning.
Good morning. Firstly, we want to thank Councilman Dom for sponsoring this resolution, and all of City Council for recognizing the hard work behind the Philly First Campaign. Philly First is the Advocacy Institute and Real Talk Tobacco's youth-led media campaign, calling for all of Philadelphia to join us in the fight to make our city the first to have a 0% youth smoking rate. Our media campaign, which includes public service announcements on our Philly First YouTube page, social media posts, and bus shelter, and newsstand ads, proves Philadelphia youth are ready and able to advocate for a smoke-free city. 1 in 10 of Philadelphia teens use tobacco. 1 in 13 teens currently smoke cigarettes. We, as the city's youth, believe that while the youth smoking rate used to be much higher, 7% is still not good enough. Every Philadelphian, young and old, smoking a cigarette represents a life cut short. I'm standing up so that no more fall to big tobacco. We need to make Philly first.
Hello, my name is Hanee Musa.
Good morning.
Philadelphia City Council is our best hope for making Philly first. You all have had and will continue to have the legislative power to make big tobacco take a step backwards. We need you all to join and support us as we call for new policies... We need you all to join and support us as we call for new policies like tobacco-free pharmacies and more fair and aggressive enforcement work from license inspections. Tobacco is a crime against humanity, and if I'm not trying to stop it and you're not trying to stop it, who will? Philadelphia will not become the first city with a 0% youth smoking rate without your help. Please join us to make Philly first. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker, and thank you all for your testimony today. We will now move towards the calendar. And, Mr. Decker, I would ask for you to please read the title of 160140.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to waste and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration of these combined conditional fees, simple title of research city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on situated in the 29th ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and resolution 160148 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, 160008.
An ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code and Title Traffic Code to provide requirements regarding the safe operation of self-propelled mobility devices.
Yeah, okay, you done? Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1600011.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Linden Avenue to Ashburner Street and both sides of Magoggy Street from Torresdale Avenue to Frankford Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160014.
An ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 42S and abandoning of a right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes, water main purposes, and public utility purposes, which extends from the southerly terminus of Galloway Street south of Packer Avenue southwardly to Patterson Avenue.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160017.
An ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 27S and abandonment of a right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes within the lines of former Jackson Street from Swanson Street to Van Dalia Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Jones, Council- Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160071.
An ordinance authorizing Willan Cassis to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1204 Frankford Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160092.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Ashburner Street to the Pennyback Creek.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160093.
An ordinance establishing a no-tract-to-trailer parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Long Street to the Pennyback Creek.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160009.
An ordinance authorizing the managing director to contract with the Support Center for Child Advocates for the provision of professional services to the city for representing children in certain legal matters.
This bill has also been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrune Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to conduct public hearings to investigate the sale of liquor in corner stores throughout Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring Paul Doris as grand marshal of the 246th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
The adoption of resolution, second.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint Committee on Public Property and Public Works and Technology and Information Services to hold public hearings to review the status of the City of Philadelphia's franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania, particularly on Verizon's progress in making cable television service available across the city, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption, second.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Wayne Jacobs, Scott P. Charles, and Dr. Robert Timothy Bryan for their role as co-founders of Fighting Chance, the extraordinary new community trauma treatment training program at Temple University, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the outstanding contributions and achievements of Julian Abel to an accomplished architect and Philadelphia resident, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Last week, I had the opportunity to tour the Philadelphia Museum of Art. And during the tour, I learned that Mr. Abel had a significant impact on the Philadelphia Museum of Art. And as many of you probably know, he was the first African-American graduate of University of Pennsylvania's Architecture Program. And so we learned that the General Assembly last year honored Mr. Abel. I did some research and found that City Council has not honored him in the past, and I was honored to put together this resolution. I know my colleague, Councilman Taubinberger Ross, would like to speak.
Thank you. Counselor, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will have to say I was really moved. When you see the Philadelphia Museum of Art, you actually see how it dominates our scenery in that location of the city. It's an impressive building. To have this African-American architect honored is something paramount that we, that we should do. Because he not only serves as an inspiration to African-Americans and people of color, but to all Philadelphians. Having been born in Philadelphia, lived his life in Philadelphia, and passed away in Philadelphia, this man is so, something unique, and we need to tell that story, and this is just part of that. Comes back to the old adage, Philadelphia is not as bad as Philadelphians say it is. We are a great city, and Mr. Abel helped make it that way.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I want to also commend my two colleagues for honoring Mr. Julian Abel. Also, he's a graduate of University of Pennsylvania, but also he hails from South Philadelphia on that 22nd and Caffrey Street under the administration of Mayor Michael Nutter. And myself, we built the Julian Abel Park in southwest center city. And so I want to thank my colleagues for stepping up to the plate and honoring such a fine gentleman who represents the City of Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Did you make your motion? Yeah, make your motion, please.
And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution in recognition of National Developmental Disability Awareness Month, honoring the Philadelphia Intellectual Disability Services on the occasion of the 24th Annual My City, My Place, Brighter Futures Awards, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and acknowledging Jason Pernardo and his company Primary Pictures for the creation of Pop-Up Philly, a pop-up restaurant organized for the purpose of providing approximately 200 members of Philadelphia's homeless community with a fine dining experience, a selection of donated goods, and clothing, and access to representatives from a variety of local shelters and organizations to help them take the first steps towards getting back on their feet, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to acknowledge Jason Pernardo and Pop-Up Philly for the incredible work they're doing to support Philadelphia's homeless and those organizations and shelters who work very hard to do the same. Also, I want to acknowledge Jason's parents, who came to support him today, Nick and Valerie Pernardo. I think they're in the audience, and they have to be extremely proud of their son who's accomplished this great goal. So, thank you, congratulations. Could you, could Jason and his parents please stand up?
No, don't be shy.
I move for the adoption of this resolution, Council President.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted today.
And a resolution recognizing and acknowledging the Philly First Campaign, the advocacy institute, and Real Talk Tobacco's youth-led media campaign for their efforts and initiative, which calls for the whole, the whole of Philadelphia to work towards becoming the first city with a 0% youth smoking rate, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Also here today are representatives of the Philly First Campaign. They're working to make Philadelphia the first city with a youth smoking rate of 0%. This is special for me because, growing up, you don't know this about me, I never smoked anything. So I love this, I'm gold. But this is another example of the positive work being done by the youth in our city. I think it's great. Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Has been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, say aye, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to investigate and hold hearings on the preservation and expansion of the city's public art, including its voluminous collection of outdoor murals, mosaics, and sculptures, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold public hearings to determine whether the City of Philadelphia should provide its own certification process for minority women or disabled-owned enterprises, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor, those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And that concludes our calendar. And at this time, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to alert everyone that on Friday, March the 18th, which is the day after St. Patrick's Day, there, there is going to be, I'm hosting a fundraiser for the U.S. Army Special Forces Association, and I'm very pleased that we're going to have Captain Dan Quinn, who was the commander of the A-Team, which forcefully communicated that the Afghan police shall not brutalize children. That has stirred up a lot of issues, I think very good issues, but he'll be coming to be our guest speaker. Also, Nick Freitas, who is a member of the Virginia House of Delegates and was a sergeant first class with First Special Forces Group, he will be joining us as well. And of course, Captain Panarela, who is the Director of External Communications for U.S. Army Special Forces. This will be at Konstatter in the Northeast, and I would invite all of my colleagues, and we'll pass out invitations and whatnot, to join us for that fundraiser. And it's because of Council's particular involvement in unanimously passing the resolution in support of Sergeant First Class Charles Martlin, who is due to be involuntarily discharged on March 1st. So we urge everyone to contact, contact their congressmen and senators, Congresswomen, to support Charles Martlin and this issue, and the fact that I will also be presenting the resolution that we passed honoring Captain Dan Quinn. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Speeches on behalf of the majority, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A friendly reminder that today, for the fourth year, we will host our annual City Council African-American History Month celebration. So I want to offer a friendly reminder to my colleagues to stay to join us for the presentation before our council staff. It will, the actual art experience will take place here in City Council chambers and will be immediately followed by lunch. I should underscore that men, that staff must attend the entire program and enjoy the entire art and cultural experience in order for you to receive your bookmarked ticket So, I'm asking that staff join us, hear from my colleagues, and we will set up immediately following City Council adjournment. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you also for four years ago consenting to establish this new arts experience for City Council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All I can say is, mm, look forward. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think I've stated before that I'm sure when many of us, you and I, and many other members of council, were staff members here in council, and also for other elected officials, we knew how important staff members were to, to, to government. And I think we know today how talented so many of our present staff members are in all offices of City Council. However, oftentimes, other people outside council find that talent and make offers to take some of those good people away from us. On March 17th, Monday, March 17th, Lou's Cologne in my office will be leaving us to become the Executive Director of the Governor's Advisory Commission on Latino Affairs. And I would say this is an ideal position for Lou's because she's well-respected in the Latino community, and I know from going to events where people sort of just gravitate towards her. In fact, Mr. President, when I was at a number of events with her, I kept hearing the same phrase being said in Spanish, and I found out later that translated into, who's that old guy with Lou's Cologne? Not good for the ego, but what the heck, it was true. Lou served a total of 13 years here in council, starting with Councilman Ortiz, then with Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and then luckily for me, for the last eight years in my office. She always served in very capable manner and to the benefit of the office she was in. And we all miss Lou's, and particularly that big- And we're all miss Lou's, and particularly that big smile that brightens up any room she's in. I know she's over here some, there she is. You're supposed to be smiling, not crying for crying out loud. We're, we're glad, though, that she's going to be close by. Her office is going to be a brawn walnut, and we're sure, we'll see her occasionally, and I'm also sure she'll do extremely well in her new position. So, Mr. President, I hope you all, we'll all join together and wish Lou's all the best and thank her for her service in council. Thank you, dear.
All right. It's okay. All right. Congratulations, Lou. And make sure we get the hotline. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you so much. I am honored to stand with my, the co-sponsor of today's legislation on municipal ID, Councilwoman Kenyatta Sanchez, along with Councilman Kurt Jones, as we try to advance and embrace a more inclusive society in our, in our city. And I think that, you know, over the years and decades, as security has increased around the country, we forget sometimes for those of us who have the privilege to have identification or the resources to be able to have it, those who don't. And it sometimes gets into us that it's hardened about why people don't have ID. But I think with this legislation, we advance a lot in tearing down barriers for thousands of Philadelphians who may have been deprived of access to basic services through reasons that we don't even understand, despite the city's commitment to full inclusion. And, you know, just as an example, to get into this building of City Hall, to get into many public institutions, you need ID. And it's just a regular thing that most people go through, but we don't think that a public building should be accessible to all, and a municipal ID will help tremendously with that. And we have to be conscious of the fact that people face barriers that can maybe even prevent them just from getting into the door, and that just can't be acceptable in our city. So, this municipal ID program, I'm proud to support it with Councilwoman Kenyatta Sanchez, with Councilman Jones, hopefully with the support of all of City Council, to help ensure that all of our neighbors are treated equally as Philadelphians. The second thing I just wanted to raise very quickly was, you know, the school district of Philadelphia is, is going through all of its finances and will soon come up before us for a budget review. But no matter what a mess the school district's finances may be, no matter what chaos the SRC may be in right now, Councilwoman Blackwell and myself hosted a set of hearings in which we understand the status of what's happening to our young people today. And that includes the fact that we've got between one-hundred-and-seventy-five to one-hundred-and-eighty-five vacancies in schools right now. That means fifty-two-hundred to more than that go to schools every day and don't even see a teacher in front of them. And that's just simply unacceptable. And the fact that this question has not been fundamentally answered and demanded of the school district before an SRC commission leaves it, for better or for worse, to be somewhat in our court. And I feel that we can bring a moral calling to it, we can use the pressure of the budget hearings, we can use the pressure of these public hearings for this. It's not just that, but the fact that information like the fact that there are more than almost over five-hundred and some classes that are severely overcrowded. And at the high school level, that means going to classes with forty and fifty teachers, forty and fifty students in a classroom, and that's just simply unimaginable for our young people. If we're upset about truancy, if we're upset about kids not showing up, if we're upset, upset about the dropout rate, imagine showing up to high school and they're not seeing a teacher in front of you, rotating subs, and then a classroom of fifty. And that's the kind of thing that we're going to try and drill down on. I understand the school district is frustrating, to say the least, but as we move forward, the opportunity to hold them accountable will be a primary mission of ours, to hold them accountable not just to what money they receive, but particularly how they spend it. We'll hold them accountable to the school code, we're going to hold them accountable to making sure that basic rights are accessed. This is a darn low bar for us, but it's going to happen for our kids and for our city, and look forward to working with all of my colleagues to make sure that that's a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. You know, Dr. King once says, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Many of you may have read about a contentious community meeting in Point Breeze, the neighborhood in which I have grown up in all my life and where I am currently raising my family. On this past week, on Monday night, a community zoning meeting, at a community zoning meeting, a member of a registered community organization in attendance made an anti-Semitic remark during the proposal of a development project for the Point Breeze area. I want to go on the record stating that the language, language was totally inappropriate and shall not and will not be tolerated, but most importantly, does not reflect the sentiments of the loving and caring people who reside in Point Breeze. I'll be the first to say that gentrification is a controversial issue about which people often disagree, and meetings in gentrifying neighborhoods can get contentious and emotionally charged. I understand that, but I would like to clearly state for the record that hateful comments about one's race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity, or sexual, or sexual orientation will not and shall never be tolerated. My staff and I have reached out and have been starting conversations with the Human Relations Commission, as well as the Anti-Defamation League and the Planning Commission to begin addressing this issue. We are also working with the Planning Commission to ensure that no community organization associated with the City of Philadelphia, which represents the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, is allowed to spout hatred. If the provisions of the code need to be changed to do so, I will work to amend the law. We will also be working with the Human Relations Commission to begin looking at the issue of gentrification, but also, most importantly, the human relations aspects that come along with the development and displacement of long-term residents, but also, when you have new residents moving into the neighborhood, how do they coexist with long-term residents in an atmosphere that's conducive for all? Again, I'm always one to say, we need smart development, and we can always debate about what type of projects are taking place inside gentrifying neighborhoods, but it should always be a civil conversation. It should never get to the point where you're disrespecting someone's cultural heritage, sexual orientation, and/or their religion. And so, I wanted to state that for the record, because at the end of the day, I've always stood for equality for all people, but most importantly, that community of Point Breeze in which I live in, I do not want to be painted with a broad brush stroke that everyone who lives in the Point Breeze community is, are people of hatred and don't want any type of development taking place in their community and aren't welcoming of people who want to move into the community. Those comments were mentioned by a particular group, but does not reflect the sentiments of the Point Breeze community as a whole. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, councilman. Point well taken. And the chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. We here in the City of Philadelphia often are in a tale of two cities, and I say that because last night I was driving my son to speech therapy, and I was, as I was listening to nine-hundred AM W R D, Nick Talafara Show, and I heard my son's principal, Leroy Hall from Houston Elementary School, talk about the outstanding achievements that Houston has achieved in their school performance index, and it was really great to hear, because I'm in the school every day, dropping my son off, to see the great strides that Principal Hall has made, as well as, and he's building upon the achievements of former Principal Johnson and Principal Kim Newman. So, that was great to hear. But what also, the other side of the two cities aspect, which is troubling, is some of the things that are happening at Cook Elementary. Working for Councilman Tasco, I'm familiar with Cook Elementary because it's in the Logan section of the city, and I'm concerned in reference to some of the dynamics I've been hearing regarding Cook Elementary and the entity Gray Oaks Foundation, which is coming in to provide leadership at Cook Elementary, and some of the changes that may be occurring as it pertains to children with learning differences like autism, like my son. So, often, as we deal with the issues here in the City of Philadelphia, we have, we have a tale of two cities, great pods of things that we don't hear enough about, like at Houston Elementary School, and at times troubling things that we hear about, like at Cook Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly agree with all the statements made today. I am responding to those made by Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, with which I agree. I would only like to say, this whole issue of gentrification is one that will affect many of us, and I ask my colleagues, especially District Council people, to note that you have people who are coming in from outside the city, who are meeting on the same night your groups meet in other locations, who are pulling people from them, creating new organizations whose names are similar to the groups you already have, and who, and if you, and if you're in a community that doesn't have a lot of organizations, and they'll create a name. If you're in one that, they may change part of the name from group to organization and all of that. So, they're doing that, they're trying to pull people into their group so that they may come in and displace our community organizations and the people who live there. So, so I say that to say, we have to be aware, alert our community groups, and realize that people have a right to their neighborhoods, a right to live in the neighborhoods, and control those activities that happen, and nobody has a right to come in and try to displace them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There being no additional speeches, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March third, twenty sixteen, at ten AM.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It has been moved in second, that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, March third, twenty sixteen, ten AM. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you all very much.